And face forward and switch on the closest microphone to you. If you encounter any problems with your voting handset, please raise your handset in the air and a member of committee services will assist. I would like to extend a warm welcome to members of the public attending the meeting today. You are very welcome to attend and observe proceedings, however, I request politely that you do not disrupt the meeting. We do have a very special small guest with us today. So let's, let's show how, how well we do this job. Members, it is with great sadness, I have to announce the death of former county councillor and older woman Joan Maslin and former county councillor and older woman Edna Hunter. Joan was elected to Durham County Council in May two thousand and eight and served until May two thousand and seventeen. She was also elected to Easington District Council in nineteen seventy nine and served for thirty years until April two thousand and nine. Edna was elected to Durham County Council in nineteen ninety seven and served until two thousand and eight. In May two thousand and seven, Edna made history by becoming the first female chair of the county council. Can I ask you all to join with me in standing for a moment's silence? We move to item one, the minutes of the meeting. Can I have a mover?
Chair, I'll move the minutes.
Second the minutes, Chair.
Are the minutes agreed? Thank you. We move on to item two, declarations of interest. Does any member wish to declare an interest in relation to any item of business on the agenda? Thank you. We move to item number three, chair's announcements, and I do apologise because it's a bit long, but I do make an apology in advance. Once again, I'd like to welcome you all to the meeting. Can I again ask that everyone is respectful to each other during the meeting? Robust debate is part of the democratic process, but I would ask members to respect the views of others and not to point fingers during a debate. I would also remind members that it's not appropriate to shout at other councillors across the floor during the debate. We have microphones which allow everyone to be heard, so please use them when speaking. Where points of order are raised once a ruling has been made on advice of the head of legal and democratic services, it will not be revisited. Since the last council meeting, I have attended various events. On the twenty first of September, I had the pleasure of visiting the Hermitage Academy Mindful Garden. The Mindful Garden serves many purposes, including providing a serene setting for one-to-one counselling sessions, facilitating mindfulness practice like meditation and mindful walking, offering a safe haven for self-regulation and serving as a peaceful space for students to enjoy during their break and lunchtime. On the twenty seventh of September, I visited the Faith Museum at Auckland Castle, which explores how faith, belief and religion have shaped lives and communities in Britain throughout history. On October the seventh, I attended a hundredth birthday party for a local lady held in Haswell and District Mencap premises. I'm also pleased to announce the following events. The construction of a thirty-seven million primary and secondary school campus that will provide world-class facilities for more than a thousand of County Durham's children is underway. The campus will accommodate new buildings from Belmont CAV Primary School and Belmont Community School on the Buckinghamshire Road. The three, the three-storey secondary school and two-story primary school will be built on the existing sports field before the current buildings are demolished. The project will ensure school provision in Belmont keeps pace with growing demand for places. As ever, County Durham entries have thrived in this year's Northumbria in Bloom competition. Judges for the annual awards, which are run by the Royal Horticultural Society, visited the county earlier this year. They were clearly impressed by what they saw, as entries from across the county dominated winners' lists in several categories. And among the many successes were the following entries submitted by us and local partners. Durham City won a gold and winner in the small city category. Chesley Street silver in the large town category. Riverside Park and Wharton Park gold in the best park category. Durham Bid gold and winners in the best town centre retail areas, Business Improvement District category. St Cuthbert's Hospice gold and winner in the best. Care Residential Convalvescent Home Hospice or Day Centre category. Durham Botanical Gardens gold and winners in the best tourist or visitors attraction or country estate category. Crook Hall and Gardens gold in the best tourist or visitor attraction or country estate category. St Cuthbert's RC Church in Chesley Street gold and winners in the best religious establishment category. Durham Cathedral gold in the best religious establishment category. St Margaret's Allotments gold in the best allotment category and Lumley Castle silver in the best hotel category. There were also accolades for entries from local communities, town and parish councils and schools, with Durham Giles Gate Primary scooping yet another win. Seam taking first place in the coastal resort category and Stanley getting a gold in the large town category. I would like to place on record our thanks to all the community groups, schools, local councils, businesses and organisations that came together to showcase their efforts for this year's competition. And finally, this morning, can I extend a warm welcome to facilitators of the Climate Fresk, Climate Fresk Quiz version is a stimulating educational game concerning climate change, first developed in France and now being rolled out globally. The Climate Fresk is on display in the foyer and members are encouraged to see what is being offered. Ask questions to the facilitators and feedback information on groups or individuals in their area who may be interested in participating. Thank you. We move on to item four, the leader's report. Can I invite the leader of the council to present her report?
Thank you, Chair. There is just one month to go until Durham City welcomes back Lumiere, transforming the familiar landscape of the city into a spectacular canvas for the work of world-renowned artists. It is the highlight of our cultural programme. This year, visitors can expect yet another dazzling display, including an immersive light and sound display in the nave of Durham Cathedral and the transformation of the exterior of Durham University's Ogden Centre. The festival will also be extending its reach outside the city with four artworks interacting with buildings and public spaces in Bishop Auckland. Lumiere is a fantastic event for visitors and residents alike, but it is also a cornerstone of our commitment to culture-led regeneration. More than one million visitors have made their way to the city to enjoy the artworks and soak up the atmosphere since the first festival fourteen years ago. A large proportion of these visitors have come from outside the county, whether that's from the wider North East or the rest of the UK or overseas. And many will have chosen to stay in the city or county, supporting our businesses and helping our tourism sector grow. As you will know, last year, for the first time ever, tourism contributed more than one billion pounds to the county's economy. Our cultural events are key to attracting tourists, but also to enabling us to showcase what the wider county has to offer visitors. Just last weekend, we once again held the annual Durham Book Festival, attracting thousands of people both in person and online. I'm sure this year's event, the Lumiere event this year, will once again prove even bigger and better than the last, and I hope you'll all find time to be able to visit the festival yourselves. Thank you, Chair.
Do any members have any questions on the report? Can I ask the council to note the report? We move on to item five, questions from the public. There are no questions have been received for today's meeting. Item number six, petitions. No petitions have been received for today's meeting. We move to item seven, reports from the cabinet. Can I ask the leader of the council to present the report?
Chair, present the report as tabled in the papers.
No questions have been received in respect of the report. Can I ask the council to note the report? Thank you. So we move to item eight, Local Council Tax Reduction Scheme Proposal for twenty twenty four, twenty five. Can I ask the Corporate Director of Resources to present the report?
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, members. The National Council Tax Benefit Scheme was abolished on the thirty-first of March two thousand and thirteen and replaced with a requirement for individual or local authorities to develop and adopt their own local council tax reduction schemes. This report sets out proposals for our scheme for next year, twenty twenty four, twenty five. Whilst pensioners, who now account for around thirty-eight per cent of our overall caseload, must be fully protected under any scheme, we are free to determine locally any cap we wish to place on support to working age claimants. Any changes to our scheme from year to year must be subject to public consultation and stakeholder engagement, and the scheme needs to be endorsed by, by council every year, even if there are no changes. When the local schemes were first introduced, the government cut the grant fund and provided to local authorities and effectively passed all of the risk from increased incidence of claims for council tax reduction from central government to local government. Many authorities sought to offset that grant loss at the time or subsequent reductions in funding by capping the maximum amount of support available to working age claimants. For two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, the first year of the new arrangements, this council took the decision to implement a local scheme that mirrored the entitlement afforded all claimants that existed under the previous National Council Tax Benefit Scheme, and in each year since, we've agreed to retain and extend that protection. The council is, is the only one in the North East and one of only a handful nationally to continue to provide this level of protection to working age claimants, with around eighty per cent of those claimants, around thirty-three and a half thousand, receiving a hundred per cent support and having no council tax bill to pay. In July, the cabinet considered an update on our MTFP fourteen projections and also considered whether to submit proposals to council to change the local council tax reduction scheme for next year. The recommendation of cabinet was to continue with the existing scheme for at least a further year, and this report seeks to do that. In arriving at that decision, cabinet were mindful of the costs of recovery and the potential impact on collection rates, as well as both the cumulative impacts of the government's welfare reform agenda and the current cost of living pressures all households are facing, which has a bigger impact on the most financially disadvantaged households. The recommendations are for council to agree to the extension of the existing scheme with one procedural change for the additional earnings disregard for those working age claimants receiving universal credit, which will make the scheme both easier to administer and fairer. This change will see more claimants qualifying for an additional income disregard and is estimated to slightly increase the cost of the scheme by around a hundred and fifteen thousand pound from what is a scheme that, that in overall terms provides sixty-three and a half million pounds worth of support, and that procedural change will support around a further six hundred claimants. In agreeing to the recommendations, council are committing to undertake a further review next year to inform options and proposals for twenty five, twenty six. Chair, members, the, the recommendations are set out of paragraph thirteen in the report.
Thank you. Can I have a mover on the report?
I'd like to move the report to Chairman. I'm confident this proposals will get support from across the chamber. In so doing, members will have heard that we remain the only council in the North East to have a scheme that continues to provide support equal to that that was available under the old council tax benefit scheme, and I think that we should be proud as a council that we are continuing to do that, which is such an important benefit for people across this county, especially, as has been said, given the inflationary times we're living through at present. We must remember that this decision comes at a cost in terms of lost revenues compared with virtually every other council in the country, but on balance, it's the right decision for next year. As has been said, the total cost of the local council tax reduction scheme is around sixty three point five million, with thirty-eight per cent of the fifty-four thousand caseload being pensioners who must be protected by law in any event. We need to keep this position continuously under review. If any members have looked at the cabinet reports came to cabinet last week on the MTFP update, they'll be aware that the council's financial, finances are increasingly challenging. But with that, Chair, I support the recommendations as set out in the report and call on all members to agree to retaining the scheme next year.
Thank you. Can I have a second, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'd also like to thank the officers, all the officers, for their continued support for this report, paying tribute to the staff who administer the scheme and who work tirelessly to support the vulnerable people in our county. All members, past and present, can be proud that this council has been able to retain a local council tax reduction scheme that retains to support the vulnerable and disadvantaged households equal to that which was available under the old council tax benefit scheme. As has been outlined, we have been, we are one of only a handful of councils across the county, country, and the only authority in the North East to continue to retain a local council tax reduction scheme at the same level as was the case under the former scheme. The level of protection afforded to working age claimants, many of whom are in work but suffering from low wages and face the squeeze on household incomes as a result of high inflation, energy costs and increases in interest rates, this support has been and will continue to be an absolute godsend. I welcome the amendments to additional income disregard procedures that is contained in the proposed scheme for next year, which will help maintain support in line with the spirit of the National Council Tax Benefit System. Whilst maintaining our council tax reduction scheme in line with the previous National Council Tax Benefit System, this obviously comes at a cost in terms of foregone council tax revenues for working age households. However, this is not the time to consider making radical changes to our scheme, and I call on all members of all sides to agree the proposals as set out in the report, which I formally second, Chair.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Rob Crute.
Thank you, Chair. It's disappointing that we have to come back here every year to put things right that were, that went wrong ten years ago, when the government pulled the rug out from under our feet and passed the buck over for council tax benefits to local authorities rather than to councils, and Richard Bells already mentioned the pull that that will have on the council's finances, and we've seen that coming through in the MTFP. However, we are where we are, and as such, I'm happy to endorse the, the extension of the local council tax reduction scheme for at least a further year. But there's one issue of clarification I would like, Paul, and that's about part B in the recommendations. Now, it's made clear throughout the report that there isn't any and there can't be any adverse impact on pension age claimants, and that's exactly as it should be. However, I can't find any explicit reference to the impact there may be on working age claimants of universal credit. Now, it's been said that there shouldn't be any impact on this in regard to the additional earnings disregard, and it makes common sense that we're going to make those tweaks, even if it just simplifies an otherwise complex system and a burden on the council in having to issue so many council tax demands every month. But can we have that assurance that the recommendations will have no adverse impact on working age universal credit claimants by altering that, the, the additional earnings disregard element of the, of the scheme?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So, yes, Councillor Crute, what the procedure change in here, it will, will benefit people that want to sort of have an adverse impact on any sort of claimant. What it is, is a procedural change to try and automate the way the, the system calculates the changes in earnings, where people have got, are in universal credit, their earnings sort of goes up. their earnings sort of goes up and down every month, and there's a requirement to clarify the number of hours that they've worked. Unfortunately, lots of, about 600 claimants a year, don't provide that additional information, so there's an automatic sort of calculation that happens. So there's a procedural change to try and make sure that that is a more accurate position, and it is expected to increase marginally £115,000 of additional award that is currently not being received because of the way the system works and because of the lack of sort of feedback from people. They just don't respond to the letters. So, yeah, it's a positive thing. It's an extra step to make sure that we provide all of the support that they're entitled to.
There is no one else registered to speak. Councillor Bell has a right of reply.
I would just like to ask councillors to agree by affirmation the recommendations in the report, Chair. Thank you.
Can I ask the council to agree the report without the need to go to a vote? Thank you. To August 2023. Can I ask councillor Alex Watson, Chair of the Audit Committee, to present the report, please?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. It is considered good practice for the Audit Committee to report on its work to full council on an annual basis. And as Chair of the council's Order Committee, I am pleased to present this update to council today. This report covers the work of the Audit Committee during the period September 2022 to August 2023. Through careful consideration and challenge of a wide range of officer reports presented, I am pleased to report that the Audit Committee has fulfilled its role in gaining assurances as to the accuracy and effectiveness of the council's governance, risk management framework, and internal control environment. The report sets out details of the various meetings that have been held over the last 12 months and the issues that have been considered. And there are three key areas of the committee's work during that period that I would particularly like to draw your attention to. The first area relates to the work of internal audit. The Audit Committee continues to promote and champion the work of internal audit across the organisation. As such, the committee agreed the internal audit strategy, charter, and internal audit plan proposed by the chief internal auditor and corporate fraud manager, Tracy Henderson. Updates are provided to the committee on a quarterly basis. I am satisfied that the committee provides the appropriate challenge to this process with the number of officers attending the committee to provide explanations and answer questions across the year. Secondly, the external audit of the council's statement of accounts. In July 2023, the committee received a report from the Corporate Director of Resources, which presented the draft unaudited statement of accounts for the year ending 31st of March 2023. The draft accounts were certified and published on our website on the 31st of May and provided to external audit within the statutory deadline. A verbal progress update on external audit of the 22-23 accounts was subsequently presented to Audit Committee in September 2023, and the final statement of accounts will be presented to a special meeting of the Audit Committee in October 2023, meeting for review and approval. Thirdly, I would draw members' attention to the continuing good work of the council's corporate fraud team. The Protecting the Public Purse reports have been considered and demonstrate across the council the counter fraud activity that has been completed in order to acknowledge, prevent, and pursue fraud under the council's counter fraud and corruption strategy. We have acknowledged fraud as a strategic risk, and that prevention is indeed better than cure. In addition to investigating concerns, the fraud team also utilised a range of counter fraud initiatives to protect the council and the community we serve, using its fraud communication strategy and awareness campaign. The council has an excellent local and national profile for their work in this area. They have developed strong partnerships with other public sector organisations, which continue to enhance the reputation that the council has. Members will see that this report also seeks approval from council to extend the term of office of the current two co-opted Audit Committee members until 30th of April 2024, with a recruitment exercise to be undertaken prior to that date to secure co-opted members from the 1st of May 2024 onwards. The existing appointees would be free to reapply for these roles in open competition with other applicants. In summary, Chair, whilst the report is largely for information, I would note that I consider the effectiveness of the Audit Committee to be excellent, and council is recommended to note the report and the work undertaken by the Audit Committee during the period September 2022 to August 2023. Can I also move the proposals to extend the terms of office for the two co-opted independent persons to 30th of April 2024, subject to recruitment exercise being concluded in advance of that date to appoint co-opted members for a three-year period from May 2024? Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Watson has moved the recommendations in the report. Can I have a second, please?
Hello, councillor Lewis Fenwick, Pateley West Division. I move the report as presented by councillor Watson. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the report? Councillor Richard Bell.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to thank councillor Watson for the report and to thank all members of the Audit Committee for their work over the last year. I'd like to thank also the officers who furnish the committee with the many detailed reports it considers, which allows it to provide a robust overview and assurance of our corporate financial governance and arrangements and our risk management and internal controls. It's an essential and important area of work, which has recently been reviewed by SIPFA, the Chartered Institute of Public Finance Accountancy. This gives us all the confidence that this council is making good decisions based on good information and underpinned by effective internal controls and appropriate risk mitigation. So I'm happy to accept the report as tabled, Chair. Thank you.
No one else is registered to speak. Would councillor Watson like to exercise his right to reply?
No, I'm fine, Chair. I'm okay with the recommendation and of course, the move and the fact that we need to agree for these two co-opted members to be, to continue in office for a further year, with an exercise of a recruitment exercise as well, Chair.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to note the report of the Audit Committee and agree the recommendations to approve the extension of the terms of office for the two co-opted independent persons to the 30th of April 2024, subject to a recruitment exercise being concluded in advance of that date to appoint co-opted members for a three-year period from May 2024? Move on to item 10, requests for dispensation under section 85, 1 of the Local Government Act 1972. Can I ask the head of Legal and Democratic Services to present the report?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members. Under section 85 of the Local Government Act 1972, where a member fails to attend any meeting of the authority throughout a consecutive period of six months, they cease to be a member unless the authority approves the absence prior to the expiry of the six-month period. Councillor Christine Bell has been unable to attend any meetings of the authority since the 24th of May 2023 due to ill health, and the six-month period expires on the 23rd of November 2023. The report seeks council approval for dispensation for councillor Bell in relation to the six-month rule. As monitoring officer, I've been kept informed in relation to councillor Bell's reasons for absence, and in the circumstances, I consider it appropriate for council to grant such a dispensation. And accordingly, that's the recommendation in the report, Chair.
Can I have a mover to the report?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for the monitoring officer's support with this particular issue. Christine has suffered an extensive debilitating health problem. But I have to announce, following a conversation with her yesterday, she has been finally and formally referred to an orthopaedic consultant. So we are hopeful that the improvement in Christine's health, both physically and mentally, will be short-lived and she'll be back amongst us very shortly. I support the recommendation, Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a second to the report?
I second that recommendation, Chair.
Does any member wish to speak on the report? Or are there any questions on the report? Councillor Marsh.
Chair, just to pass on our well wishes to Christine, and hopefully she's getting the treatment she needs and makes a speedy recovery.
Thank you. Can I ask the council to agree the dispensation? Thank you. We move on to item 11, motions on notice. There are two motions for consideration today, which are detailed on the agenda. I would like to bring in the head of Legal and Democratic Services to confirm the procedure.
Thank you, Chair. So the usual rules of debate apply. Movers of motions have five minutes to speak, whereas seconders and other speakers have three minutes. Members may only speak once on a motion, apart from the mover, who has a three-minute right of reply. If an amendment is moved and seconded, the debate is on the amendment. Only one amendment may be moved and discussed at any one time, and no further amendments can be moved until the amendment under discussion has been disposed of. Each member can speak once on the amendment. Except for the mover of the original motion, they have a right of reply but may not otherwise speak on it. If, following the vote, an amendment is carried, it becomes the substantive motion. If the amendment falls, the debate goes back to the original motion. And as we've done in previous meetings, if an amendment is moved, we will circulate it to all members via email as well as displaying it on the screen. Fifteen minutes before the expiry of the time limit for consideration of motions, the Chair will advise that there is 15 minutes left. At that point, no further registrations to speak will be accepted, and those already registered will be invited to speak in the order that they registered until the expiry of the time limit. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Craig Martin, can you move your motion, please?
Thanks, Chair. Craig Martin, County councillor for North Lodge in Chesley Street. Members, I've witnessed many passionate contributions on housing. The cost of living crisis has increased the difficulties many of those we represent have on where they call home. So today, I want to take some time to focus in on homelessness, to pass this motion and put housing first at the top of the agenda when dealing with housing and homelessness. Housing First is not a slogan, but a particular policy of commissioning specialist housing tenancies to people with multiple and complex needs. Rather than ask them to get sober or meet regular tenancy qualifications upfront, Housing First provides specialist accommodation and wraparound support. The evidence shows that sustaining tenancies is the best way to help people engage with support, and Housing First therefore helps people turn around their lives because it helps people kick addiction, offending behaviours. It benefits communities, and it eases the long-term demand on our public services and emergency services. How much does it cost? The upfront costs are expensive for that support, but this is invest to save. Where it is implemented, it saves money for taxpayers in the long run. Peoples with these difficulties end up requiring less support from social services, the emergency services, and quite often with these individuals, with the justice system as well. County Durham has had many years of a strong response in dealing with homelessness. I'll put in the record my thanks to the staff who have made this happen, who I know are up in very early hours of the morning working with those sleeping on the streets. But this isn't the case everywhere, particularly in our larger cities. It is horrifying seeing how bad things are out there. The sheer scale of what those local authorities and associated housing providers have to deal with. It must be impossible. That's why we in County Durham have a duty to demonstrate there are a better way to do things, rather than just firefighting the problem and throwing people suffering tough times in hostels. In County Durham, we have the elbow room to show the rest of the country there is a solution to homelessness. The motion also calls for us to apply pressure on government. We all appreciate that resources are only finite, especially in local government. So we need Westminster to prioritise funding to fix the problem of homelessness through Housing First, in turn relieving pressure on so many of our struggling public services, where they quite often aren't the right agencies for dealing with the complex needs of those rough sleeping. Councillors, County Durham has a long tradition of being focused on solutions to problems as opposed to quick fixes. Housing First does this. Back the motion.
Thank you, councillor. Can we have the second to the motion? Councillor Hain.
Dominic Hain, Conser South. I'd like to formally second the motion, and I'll reserve my right to speak until the end of the debate.
Thank you. Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Richard O'Meara.
Thank you, Chair. Richard O'Meara, Elven Gilesgate. I want to congratulate and thank my colleague councillor Martin for an excellent motion, which I'm very happy to support. The way it's often described, Housing First can sound a little bit woolly, and that's a shame because it really isn't. It is a truly excellent policy, and that's been proved in other countries. Homelessness is a complex problem. No political party of any colour has managed to fully solve it, though they've all tried. Therefore, it's a debate that needs light rather than heat. Very often with homelessness, mental health problems and substance abuse are involved. And this can be a bar to obtaining housing, as often the housing providers insist that clients engage with drug, alcohol, and mental health services as part of the housing agreement. Now, asking people who are reliant on illegal drugs, for example, to give them up before they can access safe and secure housing is simply asking them to lie about their use, thus making it even harder for them to access support. So it's with that in mind that I do believe that Housing First-type systems, which have been used very successfully in parts of the USA, are at least a partial solution. These give homeless people somewhere to live without asking questions in the initial stages. This approach recognises that housing often needs to be in place before people can begin to address other issues in their lives. Housing First also breaks the cycle of homelessness. If you don't have an address, you can't apply for jobs. If you don't have a job, it's much more difficult to pay the deposit to rent a house. So, again, excellent policy for that reason, too. I was pleased that the government's housing strategy a few years ago for tackling rough sleeping.
One minute, councillor.
Thank you. The government decided to run some pilot Housing First schemes, though sadly, none of them were near here. But nevertheless, I believe that's an encouraging sign that things might be moving in the right direction, and I would urge members to support the motion. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Alan Shield.
Thank you, Chair, and can I thank councillor Craig Martin for his motion? The Homelessness Act 2002 has brought about a more strategic approach to tackling and preventing homelessness, in particular the requirement for the development and publication of a homelessness strategy for every housing authority every five years. The County Durham homelessness and rough sleeping strategy, recently approved by Cabinet, has been developed following a detailed review of homelessness and rough sleeping. It sets out how we aim to achieve our four priorities of homelessness over the next five years, covering the period 2024 to 2029, and is to be followed by a seven-week consultation with final approval expected in March 24, which will include the formation of a homelessness forum. The evidence base has been The evidence base has been used to inform this strategy, has been extensively analysed from data from 2019, April 2019, through to October 2022, looking at the current and future trends in relation to homelessness and rough sleeping, and the challenges that we and other local authorities face as housing authority. The data has shaped the four priorities of the strategy, which were consulted upon with public key partners and stakeholders between December 22 and March 23. It is acknowledged that the number of people presenting with complex needs has increased by 26%, and this is the largest increase across all cohorts. There is a lack of appropriate housing options for people with complex or additional support needs, including poor mental health, substance misuse and a history of homelessness and rough sleeping. There's a clear correlation between the complex support needs and those repeatedly presenting as homelessness. It is therefore important to secure appropriate accommodation for this cohort with the right level of support to prevent evictions and repeat presentations.
One minute, councillor.
The availability of accommodation is reducing in the private sector. Recent increases in interest rates to address the high levels of inflation are having impact on private landlords, forcing them to sell their properties or alternatively increasing their rents, which is resulting in people being evicted or making the private sector less affordable. People leaving the private rented sector is the main reason why people are homeless or at risk of becoming homeless. This number has increased by some 6%. There is also a shortage of affordable housing across all sectors. County Durham Housing Strategy sets out plans to meet this shortfall in future years, which includes the provision of a Housing First element of the housing strategy. And my cabinet colleague councillor James Rollinson, portfolio holder for Economy Assets and Including Housing, will outline this part of the strategy. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Kevin Shaw?
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to move the amendment which I've duly submitted. on it as well.
Has everyone read the amendment? Can I invite Kevin Shaw to speak, please?
I've become a little bit more philosophical after the events of the last few months. In moving this amendment, I would just like to explain the reasoning behind it and what and why it is amended. The purpose, Chair, is to strengthen it. The previous Labour-run council achieved national recognition for its housing strategy, especially around how it was dealing with homelessness, and was given a national award. Strangely, it never featured in the latest report at that time. It also received correspondence from government commending it for being, I think it was the fifth in the whole country for achieving outcomes for initiatives around rough slavers. It also strongly opposed an application for the introduction of a public space protection order for Durham City, proposed initially by Durham City Town Council, and I personally argued against it with the then chief constable at a specific meeting at Aitli Heads, as it may have driven away anyone presenting themselves as homeless and seeking urgent and immediate help. I then saw it being agreed in Cabinet and going forward for public consultation, but at that point I must admit I switched off. As carrying the mental baggage on top of anything else the coalition was doing to destroy rather than build upon our success became too much, and possibly criminalising vulnerable people for being vulnerable wasn't a place I wanted to be in either then or at any time. We were also in the process, is the next stage of moving forwards, of intending to rewrite Durham Key Options policy, which puts up barriers to people with complex needs accessing social housing. And as there was no way back into mainstream housing for those evicted, we'd already set up the local lettings agency, accessing and managing housing for those with complex needs, so anyone so evicted could then build up an evidence base to allow them to re-access social housing. That's the two parts included in the amendment, Chair, and also the reasoning behind why it's included. Regarding the current homelessness figures, which have just been presented to scrutiny, they are truly appalling. This county has gone from being nationally recognised, celebrated and commended by government to being massively below both regional and national averages in dealing with homelessness. And that's not down to the inspirational housing solutions staff who work so very hard every minute of every day, it's down to the lack of resource for housing solutions, lack of political oversight from this coalition, and a cost of living crisis which goes firmly to the door of Number 10. So I move this amendment with the included content which seeks to help, not hinder, in its intended outcome, but I must have this opportunity to comment. This is really embarrassing, Richard. This was part of John D Corbyn's manifesto. It's really embarrassing, Mark, for when you vote for this, either in the motion or the amendment, you will become a true champagne socialist. As for the letter part, when I was a kid, I used to write my Christmas list on a piece of paper and then throw it on the fire and was told when it caught fire, it'd float up the chimney and went to Santa Claus. And to be honest, you might as well do that with your letter, but there isn't a Santa Claus in Number 10, you'll have less success than I ever had. Just as an aside, why not write to Sir Keir Starmer and Angela Rayner, thanking them for the pledge to build one and a half million new homes and the promise to end homelessness in the first term of a Labour government? And just as a personal Christmas wish, before the next, sorry, before this coalition leaves office, can you preorder some bat boxes, some meadow plants for the bees-
One minute, councillor.
...and the planning training? Because when we get back into Number 10 and run the country once again from next year, and run the region with a north-east directly elected mayor from next year, and back to the control of this council, you will see house building coming forwards, it appears to behold, and that's when you'll see homelessness truly eradicated. I move the amendment, Chair, and ask for member support.
Can I have a seconded to the motion?
Thank you, Chair. I second the motion and reserve the right to speak. Thank you.
Councillor Rollinson, you're registered to speak before the amendment is moved. Do you wish to speak on the amendment?
No, Chair.
There is no one else registered to speak?
Thanks, Chair. I'll be brief because I think councillor Shaw's outlined, outlined the position. Chair, the, the motion just seems a bit mad to me, again, at a time when we've got some tremendous staff in the housing team here who do a tremendous job in the most difficult of-
All right, look here.
You know, the staff in here really do a really difficult job with some really, really vulnerable people, and I think there's, there's a few main issues affecting the council when it comes to this. First of all, we don't have enough social housing in the county. Second of all, we don't have enough financial support, and we don't have enough resource in the, in the staff team. And that's all, that's all had massive pressures put on it because of cuts over the past 13 years. Chair, there's some things this council could do itself, and councillor Shaw alluded to them. We should be putting rocket boosters on the delivery of the County Durham Plan, which see, which see massive increases in the number of social homes available to residents across the county. I feel that house building has become stagnated under the leadership of this coalition. The planning, the planning committees don't tend to sit consistently behind the policy in my view, and that's causing a massive, massive issue for private investment coming in. And here we have the motion here today where we have Craig Martin now sort of leading the council here with the tail wagging the dog within the coalition. You know, councillor Shield outlined some really, really good facts and figures within, within his presentation in the speech he gave, and I think that any homeless strategy would have been much better served by Craig sitting down with his cabinet colleagues from the Lib Dems who are leading the council and actually knocking that about and actually feeding it into the consultation that his own cabinet has just launched a couple of weeks ago, and that's how policy should be formed, based on data and fact. But he clearly hasn't got the influence of his own party to be able to do that. So Chair, I fully support this. There isn't a golden bullet that's going to fix the-
One minute, councillor.
-homelessness crisis, but it's a complex picture. It's been undermined by cuts and decisions by central government, and yet again, it'll be down to the Labour Party to pick that up nationally and locally. Thanks, Chair.
Councillor Mark Wilkes?
Thanks, Chair. Apologies, I wasn't sure what was wrong with this, but thanks for letting me speak. I haven't really, I have to apologise to councillor Shaw for not really having a clue what he just said about me, so maybe when he comes back in, I can explain it. Didn't make any sense to me. I don't know what he's going on about bat boxes when we're talking about housing. My understanding is that we're currently under a full review of the Durham Key Options policy, which kind of is what he's added in there. The problem with this amendment, of course, is that it removes any intention to contact the Secretary of State and just says refer it to MPs. So from my point of view, I don't see why I would do that because it's actually trying to contact the government that we want, not our MPs, although we are, all our, Craig's motion does actually, sorry, the motion does actually say we'll contact MPs and the Secretary of State. So because you've taken that out, I can't support it, sorry.
Members, we have 15 minutes left of the time allowed for motions. There are no members registered to speak, no further registrations to speak will be Would councillor Sirtis like to speak?
Thank you, Chair. No one can just go straight to the vote.
Councillor Martin, would you like the right of reply?
Chair, is the Pope a Catholic? Do bears poo in the woods? Does Labour need to amend everything and anything crosses their path? Yes, they do. Is it because they're insecure or compensating for something? I'm not sure, but what I do know that this was a robust motion that was constructive. And it disappoints me that instead of sort of having a kind of more, I hope with this motion, a more grown-up discussion about housing and homelessness across the chamber, we've yet again seen something kiboshed and brought a load of kind of nasty partisan politics brought into it, all right, rather than doing it. So, so my, my preference is, is to vote down the amendment and support the motion unamended. What I, what I will just add to this, though, is I just want to reiterate some of the issues that councillor O'Meara sort of said earlier, because in actual fact, there's been a lot, a lot of what's been said by councillor Shaw brought in a whole raft of topics where I really wanted to focus in on homelessness and Housing First and the positives of this particular policy, and just sort of saying that a lot of people in difficulty end up stuck in a cycle of desperation and difficulty, and we need to do more as a society to come up with policies that break that cycle, and Housing First does that rather, you know, drug addicts and stuff like that, we need to get them to kick their addiction. You know, during Covid, when a lot of time was spent actually getting people off the streets and putting them in hotels and paying them to be put in hotels, there was a lot of, there was a lot of evidence from that that demonstrated that they were getting, it was easier, it was better for them to kick their addictions and everything like that, because they had secure housing and it actually led to sort of longer-term benefits. And I'll just finish off by sort of councillor Marshall's comments about the tail wagging the dog. You know, all I'll say to that is, I, I believe in this, this council chamber is that we have a duty to bring forward important topics of discussion, put them on the table and have a debate. Of course, I've had conversations with Cabinet about the things I care about-
One minute, councillor.
Thank you, Chair. Of course, I've had conversations about these things that I care about, such as Housing First, and I welcome that Housing First is, is part of that strategy. But it's important as councillors that for these really important topics that we put them on the table and debate them and make sure the public know that we care about these issues and we're putting them to the top of the agenda, and that's what I sought to do with this motion. So please vote down the amendment and back the motion as a whole. Thank you, council.
Thank you, councillor. We'll move to the vote.
So, members, just to be clear, when you hear the buzzer, the vote will open. We are voting on councillor Shaw's amendment. If you want to vote in favour, it's one, two against, and three to abstain. If you press the wrong button, pressing the right one will correct your vote. Thank you.
We'll close the vote. Four fifty-two, against fifty-five, no abstentions. The amendment falls, we now go back to the original motion, and as we have no further registration at this time, councillor.
Councillor Rollinson, when we hit the 15-minute time limit, we don't accept any further registrations to speak at that point.
Councillor Hainey, you have reserved the right to speak?
Yeah, all I would say is, you know, I think Housing First is really important, and I know that the Labour Party didn't get the amendment passed, but I hope that everybody now can see the importance of it and put party differences aside and think that this is something that we want to commit to. I know it is in the housing strategy coming up, but I think, as Craig sort of said, we're putting that at the top of the agenda by discussing it here today, and I hope everybody can get behind that. Thank you.
Councillor Shaw, there are no further registrations. Could you give us an idea of-
Thank you, Chair. Whilst I don't support councillor Martin's bid for the leadership here, I do support- Whilst I don't support councillor Martin's bid for the leadership here, I do support this motion going forward. It is in the Labour Party manifesto, so obviously I'm going to be supporting the motion.
Councillor Martin, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, councillor Shaw. I know that when I maybe at some point make a bid for leadership, I shall write, I will not be writing to you or ringing you up for your support. But thank you for clarifying that, councillor Shaw. I will be around afterwards to take notes from other members of the opposition benches as well if they'd like to also notify me on that and what they feel about me. No, I don't, I don't have anything, anything further to add. I just hope you can get behind the motion. And I just want to say that party politics aside, you know, homelessness is something that's blighted society for so many years. Whoever is going to be in government in the coming year, you know, we have a real duty to kind of, there's a lot of problems in this country. Homelessness being that one as well, has a duty to kind of roll up their sleeves and to really start tackling and try to solve some of these problems. So, yeah, yeah, I hope the future is brighter. But backing this motion provides a better future for those sleeping on the streets and hopefully we can spur some action that way. Back the motion, please, council.
Chair, so everybody in the county knows who supports this. Could I ask for a named vote, please?
The 10 members in support. We have the 10 members. The way in which people vote will appear in the minutes for the meeting.
Thank you. We'll move to the vote.
So it's one in favour of the original motion, two against, three to abstain. Pressing the wrong button, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button corrects it.
We close the vote. Four, 106, against, non-abstentions, one. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Chair, before we move on to the next item, would it be possible to disregard standing orders to allow sufficient time for the debate on the next motion?
Do you have a second to extend the time limit?
Does councillor agree? Thank you.
Chair, we need to be clear what we're extending it for. What period are we extending the time limit for?
I'll suggest now, to be safe, Chair. Maximum one. I'd have to stop here for a full hour.
It's just approaching 10 past 11, so the motion which has been moved in second is to extend the time for a further hour.
Are we all agreed up to an hour? Thank you. Councillor Deanley, can you move your motion, please?
Thank you, Chair. Since the start of the academic year, we have seen a wave of schools being closed across the country due to the potential hazards of the reinforced concrete, ORAC. Four of our schools in Durham are now facing extremely difficult times for teaching and learning due to their closure and the relocation of their learning space. Recently, the Education Secretary was seen on camera colourfully saying how she had done a good job, when in reality the state of our school buildings are the inevitable consequence of more than a decade of Tory government cuts. We have seen the Tory government, along with the help of the Lib Dems, cut the school capital budget by more than a third. We have seen the buildings for the Future Programme axed, and as a result, the deterioration of our school buildings. It is not just the schools affected by RAC that raise concerns, however. A National Audit Office report from June 2023 found that 700,000 children across the country were attending schools that faced major rebuilding or refurbishments. This would take 11.4 billion pounds of maintenance work to ensure all children can learn in safe and decent conditions. This report did not take into consideration the current RAC situation. At the beginning of September, the government issued a statement that said where schools, colleges and nursery schools needed help with revenue costs, they would need to have this agreed by their caseworker and that all reasonable revenue requests would be approved. This contradicted previous guidance that said they would fund anything that was a revenue cost and made no reference to the capital expenditure required to address the situation. There has been no new funding announced for this, and so could potentially mean that the cost will need to come from the already squeezed schools capital budget. So where will this leave schools not affected by RAC that need urgent maintenance or a rebuild? We all know that some of our County Durham schools have been waiting years to get a new build or major refurbishments, making do with buckets in corridors during wet weather, putting up displays to cover damp patches and having teachers there during holidays to ensure that the classroom is as near to a good learning environment as they can get. The reality here is that these schools could be waiting even longer for the work they quite urgently need to be done. The decisions made by the Conservative government since 2010 have put our schools under pressure, have let our communities down and have put the safety of our children at risk. This is why I ask the council to condemn the decisions of this government and this is why I move this motion.
Thank you, councillor. Do we have a second for the motion?
Hello, councillor Louise Fenwick, Pete Lee, West Division. I second the motion brought by councillor Deanley. This government knows the cost of everything and the value of nothing. They systematically cut the funding of everything we care about over the past 13 years, including our children's access to a decent education. By scrapping the Building for Schools for the Future Programme a decade ago, the government have left us with schools not fit for purpose, riddled with RAC and a failure to plan for the future. For example, Seum High School, built only six years ago, is already at full capacity. This is a failure to plan and consider the future needs of our communities who are now paying the price. The Prime Minister wants greatest focus on maths, yet we learn the Department for Education miscalculated pupil numbers, meaning for the next academic year, per pupil funding will rise by only 1.9% per pupil instead of 2.7%. This is a loss of 370 million pounds denied to our schools, placing more pressure on our local authority and school leaders who are already struggling with the cost of living crisis. This is not good enough. It's a failure of government for which our children will pay the price this year and every year to come throughout their education. We have suffered for 13 years from the long-term decisions made by the Conservative government, which has led chaos in education and across our public service, particularly in local government. Whichever party we represent, the universal truth that we all know and I think we all agree upon is that our region, our county, our children are not receiving their fair share when it comes to school funding, denying them opportunities and life chances that an exceptional education can provide. I hope we can speak with one voice and call on the government to review school funding and educational provision to give our children the best start in life. They are the foundation on which the success of the county and our local economy will depend upon in the years to come. Thank you.
Does any member wish to speak on the motion? Councillor Wilkes.
Thank you, Chair. And let me start by saying that I've got no problem with challenging this or any other government. In fact, every government for decades has failed to put enough funding in for school repairs and rebuilds. Bad job to tell the government when they're doing it wrong. However, any motion before this council needs to have a positive purpose or what's the point of it? I'm not willing to support a motion to this council which does nothing to improve the lives of children in this county. So I propose amending it, as can be seen on the screen shortly, and to explain. Firstly, this amendment not only calls on this government but on all future governments to invest in our schools. And I'm assuming Labour members support that, given the next government could be theirs. As councillor Denali only wants to be political, it's worth reminding councillors here that for decades, County Durham Labour had been top slicing up to 20% of school funding. And following my challenge to this council, changed the top slicing policy and we saw more council investment in schools. So for decades, County Durham Labour took money from our schools until we stopped it. The second point I want to make is this. The joint administration has invested more council funding into school infrastructure than at any equivalent time under the previous administration. We've started working in Belmont on the primary and secondary school, which Labour failed to provide the necessary funding for. And I'm proud both as a Liberal Democrat and as a member of this joint administration to have done this with colleagues in Cabinet. And we've committed funding needed to rebuild and renovate Greenfield School and other schools. So we're doing a huge amount as a council and this amendment recognises that. Finally, please remember councillor Denali's motion does nothing more than attack the government. If the Secretary of State received Labour's motion, what would they do with it? It asks for nothing. It simply insults them. I expect they'd bin it. Support this motion amendment which actually seeks to do something positive. It asks for funding, both for capital rebuilds and repairs. Unlike councillor Denali's motion, which isn't much more than a hateful statement asking for nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor.
Chair, could I raise a point of order, please? Chair, I'd just like to challenge the validity of the amendment in that it's factually incorrect because over the past, over the past Labour administration, we clearly had hundreds of millions of pounds invested in new schools through this local authority, through the BSF programme. And they're there on the ground for residents across the county to see.
So the test as to whether or not an amendment is valid relates to the addition or deletion and insertion of words and whether or not the amendment negates the original motion. It wouldn't be appropriate for me to make an assessment on a political statement and therefore the amendment is valid. You may well take issue and wish to debate or vote against the content of that.
Point of clarification, Chair. It says council funding BSF, wasn't necessarily council funding. It was from the government.
Do we have a second for the motion?
Councillor David Sutton-Lloyd, Aycliffe North and Midrige. I second the amendment by councillor Wilkes. It's positive and forward-thinking and it builds what's already happening on the ground. He's alluded to certain examples. In Aycliffe, we have two other schools other than Greenfield which are going through this process already, part of the Government School Rebuilding Project, which a million pound was put into. The head of Sugar Hill, Paula O'Rourke, has said, delighted, I can't wait to get started. The academy, Wodham Academy, the cranes are currently part of the skyline of New Aycliffe at the moment. It's going up rapidly. And the head there, Andrew Bell, said, I'm delighted to receive this funding. The future looks bright. And I think one of my colleagues is going to mention specifically better, more about Greenfield. This is capital programmes that are there already on the ground happening. And I think all that Wilkes' motion is anything to do is to continue that. So I'll be supporting the motion. Amendment.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Bahari, you registered to speak before the amendment was moved. Do you want to speak on the amendment?
Yes, please. Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So I represent the Ferryhill Division. Our secondary school is one of four affected across County Durham. The majority of the school is closed. Year seven and eight are being taught on-site, but it's in classes of over 100. Year nine, 10 and 11 are alternative sites. Every child has had their learning disrupted. Now, before I get into this further, I just want to pay tribute to the staff and the governors whose efforts have been absolutely heroic to get these children back into school. But they should never have been in the situation in the first place. Now, Ferryhill School was on Labour's school building programme. That was scrapped by the Tories and the Lib Dems. School capital budgets, which are referred to in the original motion, those were slashed by Sunak himself when he was Chancellor. Now, these are not decisions without consequence and you can be under no doubt that Ferryhill School is closed because of the decisions made on school budgets by this government and its predecessors. Now, there may be some who argue that this motion is simply playing politics, as councillor Wilkes has alluded to himself. But in my opinion, taking that view is not good enough. Our kids deserve better than that. Children in my ward and across County Durham are affected because of poor government decisions. We, as a local authority, have a duty to speak up and make sure the government knows people in County Durham won't stand for that. I mean, 99% of people in County Durham aren't watching this live stream and, you know, to be honest, who can blame them? Because they're focused on the things that really matter to them. And the main one that comes up time and time again is that they want their kids to have a better life than they've had. And that's why education is so important. And it's why it's a disgrace that our schools have been left to crumble around our children. So I don't support this amendment because it doesn't condemn this government's negligence. I would encourage everyone to support the original motion because this is your opportunity to stand up for the young people whose educations have been negatively impacted. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Charlie Key.
Thank you, Chair. Firstly, I must take issue. I'm not quite sure whether it's the point of order, Chair, but I'm sure the head of Legal will tell me otherwise. Councillor Sutton-Lloyd, I don't think the current head of Sugar Hill School will appreciate her being named in here and words put into her mouth that she is needed to either negate or support. She is personally known to me, but in a non-procurety way, and she will be made, she'll be made aware of what's been said in this chamber today on her behalf. Second point, Chair.
Councillor, councillor, just to clarify that point, you could take that point up outside the meeting.
I could take it outside, outside the meeting, but I'm taking it now. He could have taken his point outside the meeting. But the councillor chose to name, to name that head teacher and put words in her mouth.
Councillor.
It's a totally valid point.
Councillor, I will reiterate what I've just said. You can take this, this is a point to take outside this meeting, not inside this meeting.
We're all aware of it anyway. Moving on. I don't know if any of you ever remember the 1980s soap called Dallas? And there was a season where Bobby woke up in the shower and everything over the last four years had just been a dream. Well, do you know what? You lot over there have been around here since 2010, 2013 onwards. You must be living the same dream because it's as if nothing ever happened then. The 130 million pounds that we know was removed because we were here watching it removed. We were here, we were here there. We weren't in the shower, we were here. And yet all of a sudden, it's as if it never happened. I think it was councillor Wilkes or somebody else, if it wasn't him, I'm not putting words in his mouth, did say that the coalition are putting more money in than Labour did in their time previously. Well, that might be right because building schools for the future, which your coalition abandoned 2010, Mark, and you know damn well they did. Come on, wake up, you did know that. That pulled the rug under national funding for new schools, did it not? And that's why we had to turn to local authorities. And the 130 million pounds on top of that is why we're in the situation that we're in here today. I don't think actually that councillor Denali's motion is purely a spite attack at the Conservative government. I would say it's a reflection of what's gone on over the last 13 years and a reflection of the Liberal Democrats in particular, who for that time hung on dearly to the Tory-led coalition, that they were there with a tail on that one. And I'm afraid there's a tail again on this one because this is a Tory-led coalition. And I must fear there's a tail again on this one because this is a Tory-led coalition. And if you move this through today, you're just moving more and more Tory policy, not ours. We'll be around in 18 months' time to pick up the slack nationally. And do you know what? From May 2025, there's no doubt about it, we'll be around here to pick up your slack too.
Councillor Tony Stubbs.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Tony Stubbs representing Aycliffe North and Midridge. I've got two quick points to raise Chair. The first one is the motion that was raised by councillor Denali particularly asks me to condemn the government for its lack of capital spending on schools across County Durham. I would find it hypocritical for me to do that, in particular the condemn word. I can't condemn the government spending on, on funded when, when the school in my area has received multimillion pound funding. So with that in mind, I can't support the original motion as tabled. Therefore, I will support the amendment. The second point I'd like to raise, and it's purely because this has been a purely, an overtly political statement from the Labour, the Labour benches, I'd like to state that between 1998 and 2010, the school procurement programme was through PFI. And the PFI programme, through, this is an independent assessment of the programme back in 2021, proved that over a 25 year period, the school programme is 40% more expensive than if it was publicly funded. 40% more money, right? That could be in the pot and we could be using that. So that's, that's the second point I'd like to raise. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Lesley Mavon.
Lesley Mavon Belmont, I welcome the fact that we're getting a brand new, much needed, long overdue new school build in Belmont, so I'll be supporting the amendment. Thank you.
Councillor Joel Quinn.
Thank you Chair. I fully support this amendment. In Ferryhill, we're getting a new school down Ferryhill Station funded by the Department of Education, a school that is welcomed by residents of the station. And in 2013, Kirk Merton School was also opened, albeit small, I don't know why, but it's a really small school. I am working with the cabinet member for, from children and young services to come to a resolution to that problem. Chair, we've heard from members across the floor about the rack concrete issue and yes, it is a massive issue. However, it's not new. It's been around for years under both Labour and Conservative government. It just so happens that the Conservative governments are the ones to tackle the problem. Just recently Ferryhill School. That's a really good example for a child in the room Chair.
Sorry, Joe, a point of order, we've had a member shouting and pointing in this chamber today and now we've got laughter over there when a member's speaking. We have a thing on there called debate not hate. This, we are supposed to be setting an example in here to the public outside and some of the behaviour this morning has been absolute disgrace.
Councillors, can I please remind us to be courteous to each other? I don't think, you know, we're showing a very good light to the public out there. So can we from this moment on keep our debate cordial? Thank you.
Thank you Chair, I'll continue. Just recently Ferryhill School, which has done a tremendous job by the way, has tackled the problem head on. They've contacted the appropriate people, had visits from the likes of Baroness Barron and just last week posted on social media actually praising the Department for Education. Ferryhill School is an academy, like other schools affected by the rack concrete. However, when you become an academy, it's very similar to becoming self-employed. You take bigger risks for better reward. Ferryhill School took the risks and tackled the problem head on with the greater rewards to follow. I do applaud Ferryhill School and their efforts. I urge members to support this amendment, what does a lot more for the residents of County Durham as it actually can achieve something. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Fraser Tinsley.
Thank you Chair. I went to school in the late 1980s and early 1990s and the classrooms I was in, they hadn't changed much from when my father went to the same schools in the 1960s. Indeed, when my grandmother went to the same schools in Wellington in the 1930s. And we all know what happened then. We had Building Schools for the Future, which ramped up to spending £10 billion a year on schools in 20, in 2010. What's happened now, we had last year, well this year, the Department of Education calculated they needed 5.3 billion for expenditure on schools. The Treasury allocated 3.1 billion. This is pre-rack. So you can see it's less than half what the Department of Education say it needs. Now, in a strange way that history repeats itself, I went on from primary school to St Leonard's. And today, two of my sons are at St Leonard's and we've been living through the, the problems they've been having there like at other schools across the county. And what really shocked me is when I went into St Leonard's as a parent, that school hadn't changed in 30 years from when I was there really as a pupil in many ways. So it is just underinvestment that's causing a problem. Now, I will not be supporting the amendment here because I think it is right to condemn the government for what they've done and their underinvestment. And it's right to condemn them because what they're doing by not investing in schools is they're not investing in children and that means they're not investing in the future of this country. It's also symptomatic of the fact that this country is falling behind. Just look at our waiting lists in health and the NHS. Just look at the problems that are occurring, our investment in transport infrastructure. This is just another symptom of 13 years of underinvestment in this country. So I will not be supporting this amendment. Now, I've looked at the amendment closely, you haven't just seen it? But what this is doing is it's talking about council expenditure and we all know that just scratches the surface.
One minute councillor.
Of what actually is needed in terms of expenditure for schools. Most of our children educated in academies, we really have very little to do with that. The funding for them comes from central government. So talking about our expenditure, what we spent as a council, really just misses the point. Where we solve these problems, like so many problems in this country, it comes with government expenditure. So I will not be supporting the amendment. And when we move on, if we do to the actual vote on the main amendment, so the main motion, I will be supporting that. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Declan Monholland.
Yeah, I just want to speak against the amendment as well in coming on some of the things that councillor Martin said earlier on about playing politics. I mean, how many times have we brought forward a motion that directly addresses issues that people across County Durham are facing that are voted down by the coalition because it directly criticises the Conservative government? And again, I recall in the past, the leader of the council getting up and talking about how everyone had an opinion etcetera. But time and time again, we've brought motions here addressing issues that our residents are facing, that criticise the Conservative government and it's always watered down by amendments just like this. So yeah, I think, I totally think we need to keep the original wording of the original motion because it's right, it's right on behalf of our residents that we do condemn the Conservative government's decisions that are resulting in issues that our residents are facing. So I won't be supporting the amendment and I would like to support the original motion as tabled by councillor Denali.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Simon Wilson.
Yep, thank you. So just addressing that whether this is a political statement, yeah it is. Austerity was a political statement that your government chose in 2010. And I say yours as the Lib Dems and the Tories once again united together to do both of this here. We have a situation where it is commendable some places are getting new schools, but actually, we had more scheduled through the Building Schools Programme. We shouldn't just be doffing our cap and saying thank you for the little we get, the scraps from the table. We had more that we were due, that would have done better for the whole of County Durham, not just one or two areas. It's great to see, as I said though however, that the Tories and Lib Dems are sticking to the lines that they did 13 years ago to go down this route and are quite happy to go down like the Titanic together. I'll be voting against the amendment and for the motion.
Thank you councillor. Can I just remind everybody that these microphones do carry? We, we don't need to shout. We can be as political as we need to be in a very civil manner.
Councillor Richard Bell.
Thanks Chair. I'll be supporting the amendment because it's positive and forward looking. We need a long-term, steady and sustained programme of schools rebuilding from this government and all future ones. As has been said, if you, if you look at the motion condemning past actions, it doesn't even ask for more money in the future. What seriously is the purpose of communicating that statement to the Secretary of State? Absolutely diddly squat. You don't even say you want X billion pounds in Y schools bill. You don't say anything about anything. You just condemn past behaviour. We need to look positively and we need to look forward. I hope members will forgive me if I bring some numbers into the issues. The Building Schools for the Future Programme wasn't cancelled on day one of the coalition government in 2010. In fact, between 2011 and 2014, this county benefited from 76.2 million pounds of BSF funding. Why was that programme discontinued? Well, because people like the National Audit Office said the, the expectations were overly optimistic, programme costs had ballooned, the fact that it was a PFI programme led to at least a 30% waste of spending. That was an independent review. That vehicle, the Building Schools for the Future vehicle was not the vehicle to use. That's why it was scrapped. Should we have had more spending on schools capital over the years? Absolutely. We can all agree on that. We all want to provide our children with the best start in, start in life. And part of the commitment to education is giving them great school buildings. The government has, since 2015, since BFF, BSF finished, allocated over 13 billion pounds to maintain and improve school facilities across England, including 1.8 billion for the 2324 financial year that we are in. And that's part of the total 19.4 billion of capital funding announced at the 2021 spending review to support the education sector over the same period. In May, the government announced the outcome of the 202324 round of the Condition Improvement Funds for Schools.
One minute councillor.
The Department for Education is assisting with 8.5 million schools in the North East and we expect five schools in County Durham to benefit. It's announced nationally an additional 500 million capital funding to schools and colleges for energy efficiency measures and a 10 year school rebuilding programme with a commitment to rebuild over 500 schools in England over the next decade, of which we have been selected 12 for the school rebuilding programme. I don't think there's any correlation between the schools that may have been in the BSF programme and the RAC schools issue that we've got at the moment. I suspect my Labour colleagues are with a heavy dollop of hindsight, as the Labour Party is very good at, a heavy dollop of hindsight trying to link the two. The RAC issue has been known about for a very long time. It is a Conservative government that has actually kept people safe. So you can't on the one hand criticise the government for putting people into temporary classrooms and on the other hand criticise them for putting the safety of children at risk. Can't both be the case councillors. That's why this government has finally taken action with a letter in June.
Thank you councillor.
And some schools have reacted better to that letter in June than others. Thank you Chair.
Councillor Shirley Quinn.
Thank you Chair. Councillor Shirley Quinn from Shildon and Dean Valley. I just want to point out a couple of things here. It's absolutely incredible that some schools in this area are getting investments. I just want to point out, Shildon had a secondary school until recently, it's now been demolished. We now have 600 children having to go out of our town to be educated. We've got three really good primary schools in our town, of which we have 120 children per year. So like I say, we have got 600 children that are either having to be transported to Newton Aycliffe or Bishop Auckland. The investment that should have come to our area was stopped during the Building for Schools Programme. You know, and we are one of many schools and communities that, you know, felt foul of that. And I just felt as if I needed to say that. And like I say, councillor Stubbs and councillor Sutton Lloyd, absolutely incredible that you're getting the investment there for Newton Aycliffe, of which you've got three schools. Shildon's got none, with 600 children having to go out of the area. There's been investment in the Bishop Auckland schools, again, Shildon has got none of that. And we're now in this process of being demolished and our children having to be taken out of the schools. I just want to say, I cannot support the amendment. We need to get down to basics and we need to get something done, you know. So I'm sorry, I can't support the amendment and I will be supporting the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Carl Marshall.
Thanks Chair. I wasn't, I wasn't going to speak on this because I thought it was a fairly straightforward motion that was put in that's been bumped along for a couple of meetings for, for various reasons. But I'm like absolutely astounded by the smoke and mirrors we've got here this morning. Chair, this, this, this motion's not complex. You either support the Tories' funding or lack of it for investment in schools, including the running costs of them, which is plain for everyone to see. Go and speak to a child in a school, go and speak to a teacher, talk to a teacher who's doing the job of a social worker, trying to support children with after school clubs and the pressures they've been put onto because they've had to pick up all of the other support networks that were around children and families in County Durham because of Tory and Lib Dem cuts nationally. So go and speak to them, the problems are there. It's very simple Chair. And I think the residents of County Durham need to know they've got a choice, right? And that's why I'm going to ask for a named vote and I'm sure colleagues will stand up to give us that. Because the choice they've got, they either vote for a Lib Dem, Tory and independent propped up coalition here that refuses to condemn decisions that have had a negative impact on children and young people's lives in this county, which will then have a knock on effect to the, a whole host of other issues in those young people's lives, or they don't. And the alternative is they can vote Labour. And that's the only alternative that residents across County Durham have got Chair. And I'd request a named vote and I hope everybody votes against this amendment because not only is it, is it, it doesn't do what the original motion was meant to do, which is to show which side we're on, but it's also factually incorrect. Thanks Chair.
Thank you councillor. I'd just like to say we've noted the request for a named vote. We move on to councillor Alison Beatty.
Thank you Chair. Like Carl, I wasn't actually going to speak today. In fact, my pens just ran out scribbling frantically some notes. Councillor Alison Beatty, one of the three county councillors in Pelton Division. The area where we have the only primary school affected in the county, that being St Bennett's Primary School. Unlike the older pupils who experienced non-face-to-face learning during Covid, many of our new starters, reception children have had no school to be able to return to. I actually commend the staff in what they tried to do. I also commend the local community centre for cancelling all of the actual projects that operated out of that centre to accommodate the school. I also commend the parents that's actually having to tolerate this situation. However, I think the, the actual point of issue that I've actually got is I don't think any children should be disadvantaged by where they actually live. I find it really, really upsetting to hear references about academy schools. I think we need to be mindful that at the end of the day, these are our pupils. These are pupils in our divisions that are affected, whether they go to a primary school, a secondary school, whether it is an academy or not an academy. And I don't think that, I don't think it was an actual appropriate reference to actually make. I'm pleased to hear that some areas have actual schools that are being rebuilt. We've had a secondary school demolished and as I say, we've got the only primary school affected. Our young people need the right premises to actually help and assist their learning. How can we expect them to thrive and be our future if they haven't even got that adequate facility? Our pupils from St Bennett's School.
One minute councillor.
In Pelton are actually having to travel, be bussed out of the area because all of the classrooms are actually affected. Alternative provision on the site has been accommodated, but I don't think it's appropriate, primary school children having to travel out of the area. And I'm really appalled to hear the references about academies. I think that's fundamentally wrong, they're our children. Thank you. And sorry, I will be supporting the original motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor McKeon.
Thank you very much Chair. My aunt actually works in the school in Alison's Division.
Thank you very much Chair, my aunt actually works in the school in Alison's Division and it's her class that are being bussed all the way to Manchester every day, so we know all about this in my family. I just wanted to say that I'm sick of absolutely everything in this country being broken. We ask nicely every year for the resources to do the things we need, including our school capital programme, but every year we just don't get what we need. And I remember when I was part of the portfolio that oversaw education, we didn't get it then, for years we just have not. And it's not just education spending, it's about the government changing the terms of the levelling up funding after we submitted our bids, it's about a different council going bankrupt seemingly every other month and the government seeming not to care about it. And of course, this is political, we're actually politicians and this is part of our job. And, you know, standing here, I see bravery as calling this out and standing up for ourselves and I don't think it's enough to just do what has been done time and time again. I think it is time for us to condemn the decisions that have been made. And so I'm just wondering, why is councillor Wilkes and why are so many of his colleagues so afraid of calling out this government? I just don't see what they have to lose.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Henderson.
Thank you Chair. I'm quite amazed that we have been at this side of the chamber now for just above the two years, yet it appears to be our fault that all the schools are falling apart. You know, 100 years before that, I'm sorry folks, but it was your fault. Right, the council have continued to spend above and beyond the capitalised maintenance budget to provide much-needed improvements to the schools for our children, including rebuilding Greenfield College and a new school for Belmont. It is true that the capital allocations have reduced over time, there's more schools that are capitalised and this pot has got smaller, whilst assuring that the capital allocations have fully spent and completed with other funding such as the carbon zero grants. If we consider capital maintenance budgets, in the last two years of the previous council, DCC spent 12.1 million pounds on capital maintenance. In the first two years of this council, we have spent 13.9 million. That shows the commitment of the joint administration to our schools. May I also add that there has been announcement that 500 new schools are going to be built across the next 10, 10 years. Where they're going to find the builders from, I don't know.
One minute councillor.
Because there seems to be a shortage. However, from the 500 schools, we are having 12, there's 12 schools on the list for the county now and there's a long way more to go. That's all, thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Alwyn, go on.
Thank you Chair, and sorry, I didn't intend to speak, so I'm sort of moving everybody around here a little bit. I'm standing Chair to oppose this amendment and I oppose it because as we have heard from various speakers and as councillor Marshall has said, councillor Denali's motion isn't complex, the simple motion, the simple motion which condemns the Tory government that has not put in the investment into schools in this county over several years and in fact nationally, the funding hasn't been there. But this county, we're talking about this county. So how are we supposed to as politicians deal with this? We deal with this Chair by coming along here and making requests to the Secretary of State or making requests to the government, to the Prime Minister, to, and these are Conservatives, to say, it isn't working for our children in this county. It isn't working for our children in this county for a variety of reasons, but if we don't have the buildings that are safe and secure, which is actually, being secure is one of the things that Ofsted look at as well, so if we don't have safety and security, we don't have children actually learning. And that's just not right. And nobody here could ever say that that was right. The investment hasn't been there and we need the investment. And there's one other thing I want to say Chair, which is around the last paragraph of this amendment where.
One minute councillor.
Councillor Wilkes talks about putting in this council over the last two years, putting in more funding into school buildings and we've heard from other councillors on that side of the chamber about the schools that are being built. I mean, it's easy to make sweeping statements and with respect Chair, I've seen lots of sweeping statements from councillor Wilkes previously and I'll say no more about that. But I will say this, from the councillors who have sat over there and said, we've got school buildings in Belmont, we've got buildings in Greenfield, can I just point out that you're actually taking credit for school buildings that were put in place by the previous Labour administration? Now, you're very good at that, you're very good, sorry for pointing Chair, I was a teacher, it's very difficult, I'll put my hands behind my back, but I, it's very, you're very good at taking credit for what this previous Labour administration actually did. And I oppose this amendment, we have a seriously good motion here from councillor Denali, which I think everybody in this chamber should vote for. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Danny Woods.
Thank you Chair, councillor Danny Wood, Pelton Division. I also wasn't planning on speaking this morning, so I'm going to try not to cover too much of what councillor Beatty's already said. In response to councillor Bellar, I'd just like to raise some figures that I know he was keen to discuss. I think it was 13.3 billion he quoted as the government have spent since 2010. I've had a look at the Institute for Fiscal Studies data, as they very helpfully equated capital education spending per year and accounted for 23 to 24 pricing. So under, between 2009 and 2010, under Labour, this was over 10 billion of investment in that year alone, against the Conservatives' record of 13 billion over 13 years in office. We also heard from councillor Wilkes earlier, so I think it'd also be helpful for council to just consider what was the influence of the Liberal Democrats. This funding was slashed year on year since 2010. By 2013 to 14, it was down to less than 4.5 billion once you account for 23 to 24 pricing. So contrary to some of the comments we've heard this morning, the Liberal Democrats do love playing politics, not just in Westminster but right here in County Durham too, it's proven to be their route into cabinet positions. Over a decade on from Nick Clegg being appointed as Deputy Prime Minister, it's clear that the Liberal Democrats have not changed one bit. The original motion is asking us to condemn the government's decision, I support the original motion and I would ask all members to vote against this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Paul Cheiler.
Thank you Chair and good morning council. I am going to speak against this amendment, but before I do that, I want to say, this debate to me is a debate that I love and I cherish because it's so, so simple is it not? Over this side of the room, I hear care, I hear passion and people do raise their voices Chair when they're passionate and I hear people full square behind our children and our families and I'm proud of you, well done, well done. Conversely, on the other side of the room, I hear lots of words and an amendment which is a thinly veiled smoke screen that, in my way of thinking, actually is speaking support of this dreadful government that we're being ruled by and being let down by, week after week and month after month and year after year. So to me, that's why it's so simple and Stacey, brilliant, well said, it's time we started calling out this awful government and getting behind our families, getting behind our children. So for me Chair, it is so simple, you either do that or you support the Tory government. Let's call them out, Stacey you're right, let's call them out. Vote as you will council, for our families, for our children or for the government, simple. Thank you.
Councillors, we have 15 minutes left of the time allowed for motions. There are three councillors registered to speak, there will be no further registrations to speak at this time. We will work through those already registered until expiry of the time limit. Councillor Joanne Howie.
Thank you Chair, good morning everybody. I will be going with this amendment because I believe condemning something from 13 years ago is not the way forward, we need to look how we're going to work this forward now and we need to plan for the future, that's what we need to do. PFI funding that was planned for the schools, it doesn't work. Look at what happened to Bishop Auckland Hospital, all that money was still paid back for a hospital that isn't even hardly used anymore. So that is, that was a bad way to go about it. On Shildon, I actually worked quite a lot on that case myself with the Shildon, we spoke to a lot of people down there, a lot of residents who want to send their children to school in Bishop Auckland or over to Newton Acliff. There were a few that wanted to keep it in the town, but we fought hard to keep that school going and it was actually under the previous administration that that was due to close, it wasn't under our administration. The consultations actually showed people mainly wanting to send them out of the school, they didn't like the Shildon school, we tried our best with that one from our end. In April this year, there was a £2 billion injection into schools in the area and it's up to the schools how they want to spend it and it's faster than forecast inflation, bigger than forecasted inflation as well. Sorry I'm a bit all over, I haven't planned on speaking this morning either, but it's actually made me quite cross listening to some of this coming in, we need to do this, looking forward now, because we might have another government coming in next year, we don't know what's going to happen. But looking back 13 years, what's happened in the past doesn't work, please let's look to the future, build on what happens with the future with any government that's in place because our children do matter, we all care about our children. I have got four children that I'm still looking after and bringing through school and university, so you can't play the card that we don't care, we care an awful lot, we just need to get going, going forward for a brighter future for our children from now on. You were all in administration before, why were the inspections not carried out on the schools when you were in administration? That's what I can't understand either.
One minute councillor.
I'll leave it there, thank you Chair.
Councillor Amanda Hopgood.
Thanks Chair, just want to pick up on a few points that have been raised this morning. So in reference to councillor Mull Hollands' comment about motions being passed unamended, the only motions in the last two and a half years that haven't been amended were Labour motions that this side accepted. Every single amendment, every single motion that this side have put forward, you've amended. The actual motion, I am speaking on behalf of the amendment. The original motion is sadly the usual standard we would expect from the Labour Party in County Durham in terms of it's all words with no substance. A bit like the announcement of Belmont School and Greenfield School, a nice announcement but no money to back it up. We're the ones, which is why that's on there, that found the shortfall in the revenue funding and the capital funding that you hadn't put forward. It's very easy to stand in here and make comments publicly about what you're going to do, but actually funding it is slightly harder and that's why that is accurate. BASF wasn't council money, didn't come from the council tax money in this county, it came from government. You're quite right Carl, it did come into our account to go out the other end, so it wasn't actually part of the council budget. And councillor Beatty's comment in fair funding for schools, I couldn't agree more, postcode lottery should not be acceptable, which was why at least 10 years ago, I stood up in here and said, why was it fair under the council's schools funding pot from this council run by the Labour Party that the schools in my area got 950 pounds per pupil less than the schools in the east of the county? That wasn't fair. And finally, with regards to the academies, I want to thank our staff in our education department here. There are four academies who've got the RAC problem.
One minute councillor.
But as a council, we haven't stepped away from that, we haven't turned around and said, that's your problem. Jim Murray and his team have worked tirelessly with those schools to come up with solutions and help for them. In fact, with the conversation I had with councillor Martin Gannon, leader of Gateshead Council and chairman of the Academy Trust that has St Leonard's in and the other schools, he commended Durham County Council's work and the support we've given the trust since this announcement was made.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Luke Holmes.
Yeah, thank you Chair. I'm delighted that a new school in Spennymoor is due to open in September next year, thanks to 13 million pounds of investment from this council. It'll host 630 primary school pupils alongside a 52-place nursery unit for children aged two and older and I want to take this opportunity to thank councillor Henderson and council officers for their work to make this possible. Labour always talk about money, they always talk about funding comparing the size of the pot, but at the end of the last Labour government, I just want to actually say I think we need to look at value for money rather than who gave the most money. In 2010, at the end of the last Labour government, just 68% of our schools were rated good or outstanding. That's now 89%. Witworth Park School in Spennymoor was rated inadequate whilst it was a school under the previous administration, now rated good. Opposition councillors talk about levelling up funding. Earlier this month, I was delighted to hear that Spennymoor will receive 20 million pounds from the government to address local needs and priorities. More investment, regeneration, better education, that's what the joint administration is delivering in collaboration with the government. So I'm not going to stand here and condemn a government which is investing in long-term projects to get Spennymoor back on track after decades of neglect by Labour. That's why I'll be supporting the amendment Chair.
Thank you councillor. Councillor Holmes was the last person registered to speak. Councillor Denali, would you like to give your right of reply before we vote on the amendment?
Thank you Chair. We've heard from the other side of the chamber that the original motion was accused of being a spiteful motion. Anyone who knows me knows that I'm not a spiteful person, but I am passionate about our children and about providing a decent education for our children. This is a question of the safety and the welfare of the children in County Durham and our children's education that is affected. Schools should provide a safe and secure environment for their education and no children should have to go without. The RAC situation doesn't depend on a local inspection regime, but it does depend on the decisions made by the government and at the moment, we have a Conservative government and they have put all of our children at risk with the lack of funding. This funding isn't just impacting upon their current education, it's impacting upon their future. Now condemn is a strong word and I believe that when it comes to our children, we've got to show strength of feeling. This is why I ask the council to condemn the decisions of the Tory government made over the past 13 years and I urge everyone to vote down this amendment. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor. We'll move to the vote.
So members, it's as before, when you hear the buzzer, the vote will open, we are voting on the amendment, it is one in favour. It is one in favour, two against and three to abstain. And as always, if you press the wrong button, pressing the right button corrects your vote. And we did note that there was a valid request for a named vote, so how members vote on the amendment will be taken down and noted in the minutes.
We'll close the vote, councillors. Councillors, for 55, against 52, no abstentions. The amendment is carried, it becomes, it becomes the substantive motion. We are taking no further registrations to speak as we are at the time limit. Councillor Wilkes, would you like to give your right of reply before we put the matter to a vote?
Thank you very much, Chair. Few comments back on some comments that have been made. Councillor Quinn, I'm not sure if you know that Labour plan to demolish Shildon Secondary School because there aren't enough secondary school aged pupils to warrant a financially sound secondary schooling in Shildon. I think your Labour colleagues simply delayed the decision for political decisions until after the last local election. Councillor Batty, I'm surprised when commenting about your school that you didn't thank the county council for the work they've been doing helping schools affected by RAC issues. I'd like to put on record my thank to council officers and the portfolio holder for the work they've done, it's been a huge amount of work. Councillor Gunn, you're right that councillor Danaly's motion was simple, trouble is it was too simple. You say we need the investment but refuse to support asking for it. It was Labour top slicing school funding and screwing it away to spend on other things, remember. You commented us on taking credit for what you did. I don't want to take a centre credit for what the last Labour administration did because you didn't provide the funding for the schools which are now getting rebuilt and renovated that the council leader has just confirmed. Haven't you read our cabinet reports where we have approved the funding you didn't approve?
Councillor Wilkes, sorry.
Perhaps attending a cabinet meeting or at least read the papers.
Can I just stop you for a second? Councillor Wilkes is speaking. It is rude to not listen when councillor Wilkes is speaking. Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Chair, or any other councillor for that matter. Labour colleagues, many of you have said you want more funding for schools, so now's your chance to do that by voting for this amended motion. Councillor Danaly, if you now vote against it, it means you're voting against asking for more funding for schools, simple, which given councillor Taylor's comment about your side of the chamber being caring, would be rather odd.
Thank you, councillors.
Chair, could I just make a point of clarification place since I've been named? I said that this side of the chamber was passionate, caring and stood full square behind the pupils and indeed the parents and families of this county. The other side of the chamber are for the government.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Marshall, did you want to clarify something?
Chair, can I just ask for a name vote to get all these blue roses splattered all over the county, please?
Thank you, councillors. We have agreed a named vote, we'll move to the vote.
So again, it's as before, we are now voting on this as the substantive motion. It's one in favour, two against, three to abstain. And as the Chair's indicated, the named vote, the way in which members vote, will be taken down and noted in the minutes.
We'll close the vote, members. Councillors, for the motion 55, against the motion 52, no abstentions, therefore the motion is carried. Thank you. We move on to item 12, questions from members. There are no questions that have been received for today's meeting. So that concludes today's meeting for the council. I would like to thank everyone for taking part and to those members of the public and media who have been watching.